You got time, we got two seconds.
You got a minute, you got a minute.
We'll see.
Looks like there's gonna be good weather for the show.
I mean, hopefully it stays like that.
Did you see your mom yesterday from lunch?
Sure, yes. I got my thing, but I had to go pay ambulance bills. Oh, good, I'm getting on my mom's. Mine was... She's decided she's calling the ambulance to save me. If you don't need it, I'm gonna doodle on it if you don't, other than I'm good.
Well, then I must have known and forgot.
He's excused, he called me, sorry.
Okay. Got it, yeah, my bad, I didn't.
And I have to figure out how long...
Do you, um, give me that, yeah, give me that back.
Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Okay. I would now like to call the Monday, May fifteenth city council meeting to order, and I'd like to remind everybody that the procedures, if we would have a tornado siren go off or a tornado coming our way, we go by Sarah Bierman's Sewer Department office and, excuse me, office right out here where you pay your bills, and we will go downstairs to the basement, and if it would happen to be a fire, we would all leave out the exit door in an orderly manner. Okay, since these meetings are being videotaped, it's really important to talk directly into the microphone so everyone can hear you, and also, since it's going to be on YouTube, it's always really important to talk directly into the microphone. Thank you very much, and Jenny, would you start with the roll call of aldermen?
Sure.
Alderperson Whitaker?
Here.
Alderperson Schneider?
Here.
Alderperson Duco?
Here.
Alderperson Eris?
Alderperson Randall?
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson?
Here.
Alderperson Anthony?
Here.
Alderperson Ovian? Alderperson Dillman?
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Steele?
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderperson Elmore?
Here.
Alderperson Weigant?
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan?
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff?
Here.
Eris and Ovian are excused, mayor. Okay, thank you. Now roll call of department heads. City Treasurer Bierman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Present.
Police Chief Matt Icecant?
Here.
Fire Chief Lloyd Stinson?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitrait?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Waste Water Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Eric Walls?
Here.
City Engineer Sal Elcott?
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Buildings Scott Tyler?
Present.
Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross?
Present.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay?
Present.
Director of Communications and PR Kathy Kaiser. Kathy is excused, mayor. Okay, thank you very much. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce a special guest this evening that we have here at our city council meeting. I'd like to introduce you to Colonel Glenn Collins, who is the wing commander of the nine thirty-second at Scott Air Force Base, and we're thrilled to have him here with us tonight to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and later on, he will be giving a presentation to you, and our honor, our wing commander, Colonel Collins, will be retiring in a few days, and so, I just loved when he offered to come and lead us and speak to us here at our meeting tonight. So let's first of all, give him a big thank you for his service and a great round of applause.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have no public hearing this evening, but we do have public participation. I'd like to remind everyone, two to three minutes on public participation, and I know we have several people here who probably want to address tonight, and so, who would like to go first? Michael? And please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Hackberg, seven oh one Centerville Avenue. This is about the proposed Belleville Plaza TIF district. As I've stated, I'm not in favor of rewarding property owners for pocketing rent money and failing to invest in the upkeep of their property. I believe that the only vacant building in the proposed district is the old Sears Parts Building behind the shopping complex. Therefore, vacancies should not be a checkmark on the TIF eligibility list. This area is in an enterprise zone. This makes property owners eligible for a five-year, fifty percent tax abatement on increased assessments due to any improvements. This abatement is available now to all owners in the proposed district, and it doesn't require the city to spend twenty-nine thousand dollars creating our twenty-fourth TIF district. If TIF is created, then per state law, these abatements are no longer available to the property owners. During economic committee, one of the aldermen stated, "We have to do something." I contend, no, the city does not have to spend twenty-nine thousand dollars just to do something. Another alderman stated that the area needs an anchor store. I asked, "What anchor store do you have in mind, and where are they going to be located? Are you planning on evicting the current leaseholders? Do you really think that sprucing up the facade is going to entice Neiman Marcus to open a retail in this plaza?" When a TIF is created, funding is very limited because the TIF only receives property taxes on increased assessments. It will be years before the TIF amasses enough to front-end load business agreements, unless, of course, the city has plans to take funding from the abutting TIF threat. If so, this should be acknowledged sooner rather than later. The role of government in a free society is not to pick and choose which business investors receive government funds by forcibly taking those funds from the average citizens. I'm hoping that with the current enterprise zone abatement in place, you can vote not to spend twenty-nine thousand dollars on the creation of this TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for your comments and being so gracious with your presentation. Thank you. Okay, who else would like to speak this evening? Yes, please come forward and state your name and, and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Peters. I reside at one oh five Edgewater Drive, and I'm here representing Healthier Together. It's a local non-for-profit, working throughout the entire county, St. Clair County. Our mission is basically this: We work with communities, organizations, schools, churches, businesses, at one community at a time, to try to encourage and create opportunities for those coalitions to, to create the opportunities where people could be more healthy. We've done a lot of projects here in Belleville. We focus primarily on the prevention side of healthcare. Our partners consist of both of the county's health departments, all three of our county hospitals, and Southern Illinois Healthcare Foundation, and I just wanted to say that I took a look at your agenda tonight. I was very encouraged to see that you were putting a bicycle and pedestrian master plan on the agenda. Thank you very much for considering this. In my experience, communities that do this are well ahead of the curve, and the impact of it, I think, economically and for the health of its citizens, it's a great investment. Should you go forward with this plan, I just wanted to offer any support that Healthy Together can, can provide. As I said, we're working with schools in your community now, and just look forward to the relationship continuing, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your comments. Who else? Yes, please come forward.
Hi.
Hi.
Ninety E. Bank, six twelve East Garfield Street, and I am here for the item about zoning, rezoning on our street for an Airbnb, and I submitted a petition that was signed by some of the people on, in our neighborhood, and I am sitting with the people who are petitioning to make their home an Airbnb, and I couldn't ask for nicer neighbors, and it's not anything about the people, it is about the idea of having another Airbnb on the street. So I'd like to just voice the concerns that we have.
Hey Maggie, can you lower the microphone a little bit? Speak a little louder, thank you Maggie.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
We the Undecided signed a petition against another Airbnb on historic Brickline Garfield Cow Street. We have one owner-occupied Airbnb at six twenty that has its own driveway with parking. Six sixteen, which is the house which is up for consideration, is right next door to six twenty and has no off-street parking and will not be owner-occupied. Garfield Street is a residential neighborhood with historic significance. Parking is at a premium currently with most homes having two cars and street parking primarily, and that is my concern.
Okay, thank you very much Maggie. We appreciate your comments. Okay, anyone else tonight for public participation? Yes, please come forward. State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dr. Guy Vinudie, this is my wife Becky, and we are the proud owners of six sixteen East Garfield Street.
Okay.
And we wanted to just say thank you to Maggie for her comments. We really enjoy having her as a neighbor. We want you to know that we are here to open an Airbnb so that we can honor the house, number one, it's a beautiful historic home. Secondly, we'd like to bring a service to Belleville so that people have a place to stay. Specifically, we're looking at people twenty-four and over, professionals, medical, dental, people that are coming into the area along with the two big hospitals, military as well. We would also like to have a place for folks to stay for Art in the Square, Tour de Belleville, and some of the summer concerts during June and July. So we hope to be respectful of our neighbors' concerns, doing our best job possible to keep historical significance. We've hired a professional decorator, and so we really just hope to keep that house absolutely beautiful, and as far as the parking and congestion goes on the street, I understand where Ms. Ubanks is coming from, but we plan to have maybe one or two cars at a time showing up for a few nights. If we had a renter, we would have someone there constantly, so having an Airbnb would mitigate that congestion. I just wanted to say thank you for having us and the opportunity to speak.
And thank you for your presentation. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no one else, I'd like to once again invite Colonel Glenn Collins to come forward to speak to you. Thank you so much. Let's give him a big round of applause. Anyplace you wanna be?
I think I'll step over here so I can talk to the whole audience, if that's okay.
That would be great.
First of all, I want to extend a thank you on several levels. First, thank you to the mayor for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone in this room. A little bit about the honorary commander program that we have. You may not know that Mayor Gregory has been my honorary commander as the nine thirty-second commander at Scott Air Force Base for the last two years. In that capacity, what we try to do is we try to reach out to, to members of the community, bring them in and have them understand a little bit about what we do and what our needs are and how we function and what our role is in the Department of Defense. And so we've had Mayor Gregory come in now for the last two years, and she'll be coming to one of my meetings here in a couple of weeks, where she'll sit in and she'll be the commander for the day, making a bunch of decisions. I just hope her first decision is not to relieve me for cause, and I can continue in my short service that I have here in the last, in the last few weeks. Also, I want to sit there and thank all the other elected officials, rooming up the aldermen and the councilmen, everybody else in here. Thank you for what you do, and of course, lastly, to the people, people that are here, it's we the people that do this thing, right? And I appreciate the people getting up and speaking. It's we the people that have the voice, it's we the people that make the decisions. So thank you for being here and being active in the community. Lastly, I want to thank those who provide some special services. On my way in here just now, I had a detective I just met, and he thanked me for my service, and I appreciate that, and it's really wonderful to have that. But I want to sit there and say, today, I got up, I got dressed, and I went to my office. I was safe. Yes, in my thirty-five years, I've had some combat tours, I've flown some combat missions, but for the most of my time, my thirty-five years, I've been home and safe, and I'm safe because of the people, the firemen and the police officers, that get up every day and put it on the line for us. Every day they do that. I'm safe today, I'm not in harm's way, I'm not in combat, but they every day are in harm's way. So I want to say a special thank you to the firemen and policemen in this room as well. Also, let's not think about, let's not forget our other city workers, you know, those that go out and climb our poles, they fix our streets, they fix our sewers, they provide all those government services that we need every day to function as a society because it does take a village. So I want to say thank you to them as well. Now with that in mind, I thought it's been just a couple seconds, I think, I saw a two to three minute variation, I made more of that just slightly, but I know it's a long day and a long agenda, so I'll try to be brief. I would like to tell you guys a little about the nine thirty-second. First of all...
The battery's gone. The battery might have died.
Yeah, that lost, didn't it?
You want to come up and, and use this microphone?
Well, I can just talk like this, you hear me like this?
Yeah.
So a little about the nine thirty-second. We're a reserve wake. That means the majority of our thirteen hundred members are part-time, are part-time members of the military who have other vocations and other jobs. What does that mean? They are people that have been born in your hospitals, they live in your community, they were educated in your schools, and live and work amongst you, and they can't do what they do for the nine thirty-second without the help and support from people like the mayor, the people like everybody in this room, and especially those business owners that allow people that work for them to do what they do for us. Without your support, the reserve component cannot exist, and we as a nation would not be as safe as we are today. So thank you for that as well. Nine thirty-seconds, I said thirteen hundred members strong. We're organized in four different groups. We have a mission support group. The mission support group is, is our firemen, our police officers, we call them security forces, our people that go out and they dispose of mines, they take apart bombs and things, other administrative personnel, but those are our mission support group. We also have a maintenance group that maintains our aircraft, and I'll talk about aircraft in a second. We also have a medical group that's comprised of doctors and nurses and med techs, like a national engineer would think of that. We deploy all over the world routinely. Right now, we have over a hundred members deployed throughout the world, and we fly missions every day. So our last thing is the missions. We fly the C forty, which is executive airlift. If anybody watched the Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi when she flew into Taiwan, did anybody see that? That was the nine thirty-second, and that was our members that I'm trying to say that did that. We're pretty proud of all of our missions, but that particular mission, I'll spend just a few moments on. What we think we do is we enable diplomacy. If you think about, we're instruments of national power, there are four of them. The first one is diplomatic, the second one is informational, the third one is military, and the fourth one is economic. I think this dies on me, I need advocates to remember these, otherwise I can't remember. Those are our instruments of national power. Yes, we're the military branch, but we think, like to think, what we do is we enable diplomacy. We enable our elected officials to go throughout the world to enable diplomacy so that we can come up with a diplomatic solution that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have a military one. So, we like to think we're both the diplomatic and the military, and we're enabling diplomacy throughout the world, so we're pretty proud of that. So that's what we do in a nutshell. We have other administrative officials as well, but that's really what we do in a nutshell. I do want to leave you with a couple more thoughts. First, less than one percent of the US population, about three hundred and twenty-five of them have served in the US military. If you look at where the most of the bases are, you'll find that more and more armed defense bases are, are centered in more rural areas. What that means is that less, less contact between the greater military population and the civilian population. So I have to emphasize to you how important it is for us to interact with you, you to understand who it is, what we do, and what we do, and why we do what we do, because a lot of people don't really have sort of that access. And today, and let me tell you, I, I can't be happier with the way that the town of Belleville treats our military. By the way, I'm a citizen of the dollar rush, I said that upfront. I live in the urchins, so I'm a proud citizen of the dollar. So because of that, we think it's very important to have those community relationships, think that we've enabled with Mayor Gregory's, our honorary command, and living and working amongst your community. So again, I'm gonna end with a thank you for everything you do that allows us to do what we do, and I'll end finally with a proclamation if I can, and if I can make a proclamation, it's all based on fact, not opinion, I think the city attorney might attest to my completely factual basis. I like a proclamation that says that the city of Belleville is the finest in the land, it treats the worst of its servicemen like no other town in the world. So thank you, thanks for allowing me to be here and speak today.
Well, thank you again, Colonel Collins. I hope when I go to present to the nine thirty-second next week, he tells me I have to make some executive decisions, and I, as an elementary school teacher, I wanted to say, couldn't I like read a book about Orville and Wilbur Wright, and, and have paper airplanes, but I have my, I have my orders, and I can't do that. So, anyway, we'll see how it works out, pray for me, okay? Thank you so much, and I want to thank Colonel again for being here, and we will proceed on with the rest of the meeting. And we have a proclamation, which I have right here in my bag. Excuse me, I forgot to pull it out. Otherwise, it's a trip to my office, but I have it. Okay. So thank you so much, and this is a proclamation for all of our classes here that are graduating in twenty twenty-three. So whereas families, friends, neighbors, and educators should encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all students and honor their hard work... Whereas the graduating seniors and educators at Altoft Catholic High School, Belleville East High School, Belleville West High School, and Governor French Academy have greatly contributed to our community, and whereas the most effective way to increase awareness to the value of education and to honor graduating seniors is through our openness to learn and acknowledge everyone's abilities, talents, the importance of education, and show our appreciation for all those committed to educating our children, and whereas our students represent a bright future and will continue along the path of service and leadership in our community and our nation, and whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for graduating seniors in our community, including furthering their education, military service, trades, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Now therefore, I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-three as High School Senior Recognition Month, and recognize the high achievement of graduating members of the class of twenty twenty-three, and offer our heartfelt congratulations, and we challenge all students to fulfill their goals and dreams, and witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Belleville to be affixed this fifteenth day of May twenty twenty-three. Thank you so much. So now we will continue on. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Mike Schaefer as Maintenance Director effective May sixteenth twenty twenty-three at twelve oh one AM. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Schaefer second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Jenny? Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor. Okay. Yes, Mike, would you like to stand and be recognized? So this is Mike Schaefer?
Yes, my girl.
Our new maintenance director, welcome. He comes to us with many, many years of experience and working with the city larger than ours, but he can bring a lot to us, and we always love to bring in people that we can learn from and learn, learn how to do things differently. So Mike, I appreciate it. Would you like to introduce your lovely family?
Yes, this is my wife, Tammy. Lord, show me. Ladies and gentlemen, Tommy. And one sitting over here, fully filled with dough.
Thank you very much. And welcome to our family here in the city. Thank you. Okay, so, at this point in time, I'm asking to read together Appointments seven D through seven I. Do we have a motion to read together? As long as they're okay with it, we don't need a motion. We're good? We're good? All right, we're good with it? Okay, Jenny, I'd like you to start. You want me to read? Okay. Motion to approve the reappointment of Neil Skip McEwen to serve a two-year term on the cemetery board. Seven E, motion to approve the reappointment of August E. Warner Jr. to serve a three-year term on the fire pension board. Seven F, motion to approve the reappointment of Tom Dingus to serve a two-year term on the police pension board. Seven G, motion to approve the reappointment of Mary Smith and Helen Thompson to serve a three-year term on the library board. Seven H, motion to approve the reappointment of Don Rignan to serve a three-year term on the planning commission. And seven I, motion to approve the appointment of Angela Blackman Donovan to serve a one-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Thank you.
Schaefer second.
And Schaefer second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor. Thank you very much. And now, I need a motion to approve the city council and executive session meeting minutes of May first, twenty twenty-three.
Steele, so moved. Schaefer second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, under claims, payroll, and disbursements, I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of two million eight hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, and payroll in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Rothweiler, so moved.
Thank you.
Ferguson.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call. Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Weigant?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, mayor. Thank you. And tonight, we have no reports, so we will start with oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Alderperson Brian Whitaker, would you like to start with the finance motions?
Any objection to doing them together?
No.
On behalf of Finance Committee, eleven A one, motion to approve a contract with T-Mobile as the new carrier for city cell phones.
Eleven A two, motion to approve a contract with AT&amp;T as the new internet provider for all city buildings in the amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Eleven A three, a motion to approve a contract with Payment Service Network, PSN, to continue accepting payments on behalf of the city. Eleven A four, a motion to approve paying off balance of general obligation refunding bond series, twenty twelve by July first, twenty twenty-three. Eleven A five, motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director for the prior year encumbrances. So moved. On all.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, motions from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jenny?
Um, what am I reading separately or together?
Together.
Together. Everybody good together?
Yes, together.
Yes?
Anybody object who's together?
The Garfield?
Yeah.
Eleven B six.
Yes, I'll need to have that separated.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. I'll read the rest together.
Thank you, Jenny.
Eleven B one, two, January twenty-three, Lisa and Robert discerns request for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at four ten, four twelve, East C Street, zero eight, two, two, zero, three, two, three, zero, zero, four, located in a one single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six, two point zero nine four, one six, two point five one five, Ward two, Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of six to zero. This was tabled for sixty days on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Eleven B two, thirteen, April twenty-three, William F. Ferricks, requests for a map amendment to rezone the property, commonly known as three twelve Solander Street, zero eight, one, seven, zero, five, one, one, zero, zero, four, zero, zero, five, zero, zero, six, from an A one single-family residence district to D one light industry. Applicable section of the zoning code, one six, two point five nine zero, Ward three, Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of four to one. Eleven B three, fourteen, April twenty-three, Janice Pittman, requests for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at eighty-one fifteen West Main Street, zero seven, zero one, zero, one, one, four, zero, six, four, located in a one single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the city and zoning code, three, four, point zero, four, three, one five, four point one five, one five, four point four, six, one five, four point four, nine, one six, two point zero nine four, and one six, two point five, one, five, Ward four. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of five to zero. Eleven B four, fifteen, April twenty-three, Jody Ferguson, requests for a special use permit for outdoor dining seating at seven thirty-two South Illinois Street, Suite B, zero eight, two, zero, two, eight, zero, two, three, four, zero, zero, four, located in a D one light industry district. Applicable sections of the city and zoning code, one, one, eight point zero, one, one six, two point three, zero, seven, and one six, two point five, one, five, Ward six. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of five to zero. Eleven B five, sixteen, April twenty-three, Jody Ferguson, requests for a special use permit for a liquor license at seven thirty-two South Illinois Street, Suite B, zero eight, two, eight, zero, two, three, four, zero, zero, four, located in a D one light industry district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six, two point three, zero, eight, one six, two point five, one, five, Ward six. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of five to zero. Eleven B seven, eighteen, April twenty-three, Ashland Storage Centers East, requests for a special use permit to expand and operate the existing self-storage facility with outdoor operations at six fifty-three Carlyle Avenue, zero eight, two, three, zero, three, zero, five, zero, two, zero, located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code, one six, two point two, four, eight, and one six, two point five, one, five, Ward seven. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Schaefer, so moved.
A second.
Elmore.
Elmore? Thank you, Phil. Okay. Any discussion on what Jenny has put forth toward us? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and I do believe we need to go back to eleven B six.
Correct. Eleven B six, seventeen, April twenty-three, Guy and Becky Vannuti, request for a special use permit to operate an Airbnb at six one six, East Garfield Street, zero eight, two, seven, zero, one, three, four, zero, one, four, located in a one single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the city and zoning code, three, four, point zero, four, three, one five, four point one, five, one five, four point four, six, one five, four point four, nine, one six, two point zero nine, four, and one six, two point five, one, five, Ward six. Zoning Board of Appeals, recommended approval in the name of the applicant only with a vote of five to zero.
Okay. A motion, please.
Schaefer, so moved.
Thank you. Seconded?
Steele.
Steele? Okay. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Rothweiler.
Yes, as Mike, you know, on council, I'm not a fan of Airbnbs. I think it hurts our chances of getting a hotel, et cetera, here in town. Having said that, there's a couple of issues here. The first issue is, is that we have a committee putting together things right now to deal with Airbnbs. They're not finished with that this time. I understand the concerns of the neighbors that are around us. They don't want one right next door to the other one. And it's there at this time. It is a historic district. However, as I usually go back to, where are we at today? Today, we don't have anything that prohibits us. We had zoning look at this. It meets the zoning requirements. We just passed two or three other ones that are on this list. They met the zoning requirements, et cetera. We just approved those. So, I understand the concerns. We need to get that, that, those regulations done and get that in place for Airbnbs if we're going to deal with this and do that. And also in the interest of, I know personally, the applicant, I would be abstaining from the vote for that reason because I've known him for years. The basin's a great guy. But I can't vote yes or no based on my relationship with him in that particular case. But where are we now? They, we approved those previously, et cetera. So, I'll leave it up to the council. But those are my thoughts on this. And I'll, or Miss Steele, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. Um, I need to read into the record the petition that was, um, submitted by Maggie Eubanks. And it says, the City of Bel, to the City of Belleville, um, because of my due diligence as the Alder Person in Ward six, I need to read that there were nine people from Garfield Street that signed this and seven people from Aben Street. And it's the petition against another Airbnb on historic brick line, Garfield Street. Six one six is right next door to six two oh, has no off-street parking, and will not be owner occupied. Garfield Street is a residential neighborhood with historic significance. Parking is at a premium currently. Most homes have two cars and street parking only.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Ms. Schaefer?
I just have a question. Uh, I, I heard there's sixteen about, yeah, sixteen?
Yeah.
How many of them are from different, uh, different homes, though? Like, you hear sixteen, those could be people from same homes. Do you know what I'm saying?
It is. There's doubles.
So, it's, like, you gotta think about, is that sixteen or is that maybe eight homes that are between those two streets? And how can we say? And, and I feel for them. I feel for the people who don't. But how can we say yes to one that's on Garfield and no to another? I just don't think that's fair on our part.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any more discussion? At this time, we can't have public participation. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on eleven B? Okay. Hearing none. We will now.
Make it a roll call.
Uh, make it a roll call vote.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dillman.
No.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Same.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. And now, I'd like to, uh, have Alder Person, Mr. Anthony, for Police and Fire Committee.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Police and Fire Committee, I'd like to make the following motion. Motion to approve a contract with Omnicole in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, June one, twenty twenty-three, through June one, twenty twenty-eight. So moved.
Schaefer, second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'd like to, to, if you look at your agenda, it's eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, not eight hundred and seventy-five. So, thank you very much. Okay. We have a second?
Yeah, we have a second. There.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion on the motion from Police and Fire Committee? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, motions from Streets and Grades. Mr. Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, eleven D one, motion to approve a joint funding agreement with IDOT in the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for Lebanon Avenue from F Street to south of Elmwood Drive and Bristow Street to Illinois one sixty-one, ARPA and STA, STE funds. So moved.
Whitaker, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Dillman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mayor.
Thank you so much. And now, Jenny, motions from Administration?
Together. You want the last two? We're good? Together? Okay. Eleven E one, motion to approve a contract with Oset Associates to develop a bicycle and pedestrian master plan in the amount of seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars, city portion forty-three thousand, five hundred, contingent upon the Metro East Parks and Recreation District grant award, ARPA funds. Eleven E two, motion to approve amended development schedule for redevelopment agreement as amended with Missionary Ventures LLC by and through its assignee, Royal Banks of Missouri, and court-appointed receiver. Eleven E three, motion to approve consent to partial assignment of redevelopment agreement by Royal Banks of Missouri in favor of Zoom at Marion Bluffs LLC with consent of Missionary Ventures LLC.
Whitaker, so moved. Ferguson.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco. Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now motions from Economic Development and Annexation Committee. Uh, Alderman Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. Eleven F one. Motion to approve a development agreement with Eye on Design Incorporated for the remodeling of the existing facility located at three oh nine East Main Street, so moved.
Wagon, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr.?
Eleven F two. Motion to approve a contract with Professional Services with Moran Economic Development for the proposed Bellevue Plaza TIF district establishment, so moved.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Steele.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Randall.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I don't think that I could have stated it more eloquently than what Mr. Hagberg did in public participation. Um, I have no doubt that Moran Economic Development will come back with a, uh, a service, okay, a professional service completed that will outline everything needed, okay, for this TIF district to be established. It's, um, it's happened before. I watched it happen, okay, with the Hopgro House and the development out there where everything under the sun, every pothole, everything that was bad, okay, was photographed and submitted as rationale for completing the, uh, the proposal there. I've spent several hours, okay, uh, going around the area over there. Would it be nice, okay, if people were to reinvest in their property? Absolutely. Okay. Would it be nice that the city have something available to, uh, those, uh, those business owners, okay, the people who own the property themselves, okay, to, uh, be able to receive some type of incentive? And the tax abatement is, is there already. The biggest issue I see with Bellevue Park Plaza, okay, has to do with the parking lot. Okay, it hasn't been updated, it hasn't been resurfaced in who knows how long. On the backside of the property where the old Sears, uh, location was, it's, uh, you know, it, it's a disaster, okay? It's, it's like almost nonexistent in some places in terms of a parking lot. I don't believe a TIF, uh, would allow them to actually do a parking lot, uh, in and of itself. The building itself, okay, it would be the property owner's responsibility to upkeep that property. Um, I'm not in favor of, um, spending the money, okay, for this, uh, services contract of the way it sits, knowing full well that as has happened in the past, okay, with other TIF districts who weren't able to stand alone. And TIFs, I believe, should be able to be standalone. They should be able to fund themselves. And we have done, on numerous occasions, taken money. They've called it borrowing. There is no borrowing, okay, from TIF three when the money is never paid back. It's not borrowing. Legally, you can do it. It is in the act. You can take those funds from another TIF that abuts that TIF and then spend the money over there. But I don't think, with everything else that we have available to us in terms of, of, um, being able to resurface our streets that are in TIF three and using the money appropriately for that and the other infrastructure needs that we had, that putting that money at risk, okay, in this particular fashion, I don't believe is a, um, is a sound purpose. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know that some of you also have questions. So Cliff Cross, our Economic Developer, will you please come forward?
Good evening. Happy to answer any questions that you have. I know Alderman Randall has touched on it, but, uh, would be happy to address any questions that you have.
Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Anthony.
I would just like to, uh, you know, remind everybody that, that Bellevue Park Plaza, even though we're looking at basically a parking lot over there, that those buildings are outdated. I don't know when the last time there was a facelift over there. I don't know if TIF, uh, being made available to the owners of those, of that, that development would help. I just, um, I was in favor of it mainly, mostly and mainly because of the vacancies of, uh, businesses in that area. And, uh, I remind you, uh, that the McDonald's.
Sure.
I remind you that a large restaurant that was there burnt to the ground. I would remind you that we lost grocery store. The corridor itself needs help.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox to, uh, to try to address that. And that was one reason, you know, I may mention in, in Economic Development that, that once blight starts to set in, it's like a cancer. And we depend on our tax revenues to, uh, to support our basic services, police department. And, uh, also to pay our various city employees, you know, uh, the corridor, that corridor, and I only mention the corridor because Bellevue Park Plaza is in that corridor. And it runs along North Belt all the way, all the way out to, uh, where the Kmart store and all that stuff was at. And I mentioned that, that it was at. There is no longer there. We're looking at a situation where maybe TIF isn't the, uh, the, the fix-all for it. I remind the council, what do we do to, to, to stop this? We're the only city, which is a major city, we're only a major city, where a McDonald's restaurant has closed. They're, they're, they're building McDonald's all over the world, and we're closing. And I tell you, there's something wrong out there. And it needs to be addressed. And it's, it's not in its infancy, it's already half grown already. You know, uh, TIF can't do it. I, I, I suggest that we, as a council and as a city, uh, come up with something that's going to address the evacuation of businesses, uh, along that corridor. And event centers, they're not going to get it. We don't get a dime from those darn event centers. We're not getting anything from that. Uh, the, the, the small mom and pop stores that's, 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 uh, developing out there, yeah, we get a little bit of something, but we're not getting enough money to sustain. And eventually, those business owners in that particular area there, in Bellevue Park Plaza, they're going to start suffering and they're going to start closing. I guarantee you. I guarantee you, you know, I, I mean, I've seen it before.
Well, you hit it on the head. I mean, that was a discussion. What's, what's going to happen? Um, and I think the thought is, we've got to figure something out here, how to revitalize the corridor. I think your key term is "the corridor." How do we stabilize it? And I, I just want to bring those of you that are not on the committee, committee up to speed. Um, this is not establishing the TIF. This is bringing the consultant onboard to do our fact-finding in how we establish the TIF and what the plan looks like. We, I, I, what I got from the discussions, inaction is not an option at this point. We've got to find out how to address that corridor. And it goes directly to our, how we're moving forward. If, if you, you know, you've all heard me say this a million times. Our goal is to anchor corridors and spur redevelopment and stabilization around those corridors. And McDonald's going out of business is not going to stabilize a corridor. So, the thought was, we would create this TIF in the middle of the donut hole, so to speak. Because if you remember, this was never part of the original TIF three, which is the biggest TIF in the world. But it was not part of TIF three because when TIF three was originally established in the early eighties, it was a new thriving shopping center. So there was discussion, do we amend TIF three a little bit? Do we bring this in? How do we do that? Do we take money from TIF three? Those are all things that are all going to be up, up for discussion. But I think the concern is, is a twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollar investment to what we have going on over there, a, a bad investment. Will it work? No guarantees. I, I mean, I won't sugarcoat it. But we've got to do something to create a strategic redevelopment plan for that corridor, to revitalize and anchor it, and quite honestly, stabilize that portion, which some people will say is the gateway to West Belleville. We're bringing it to Lindenwood, let's take it to here, and then let's move on out to the Kmart property. And that's the vision that we're working on. And, you know, that's why we're asking for this. We need that economic development tool to move forward and stabilize that corridor.
I, I'd like to remind everyone that this year, we have closed four TIFs. And the TIF from Eckert's was closed and paid off ten years earlier than it needed to be. And so that tells you that we are not willy-nilly, just running out to get TIF money.
Well, that's a great point, Mayor. I mean, um, we understand the concerns. I think our focus is, let's be smart with our TIFs. Let's not create a TIF just to create a TIF because it's popular or it's catchy at the time. Let's do a TIF with a purpose. And the expiration of four TIFs that either were underperforming, and I don't know why they were created, I can't answer that question, but obviously, they were not performing, or they were, they met their life expectancy, the Eckert's. Classic example of a perfect TIF. We got further reinvestment from them ten years early. And it shows the strength of a TIF when you really do it right. Now, TIFs have their flaws, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm not the biggest fan of bonding TIFs because that's got its own issues. Individual TIFs, you got a little more control, but you got to be careful in how you structure them because sometimes, if you structure them the wrong way, the wrong people pay for them. And we don't want that. So we will be very cautious in how we move forward. And by the way, you'll still be part of this entire process because, as you know, in your packet, there's a schedule that's coming. And we will be bringing you into every step of this process. And you will have that input. But we're asking tonight to get started with the process in something that we feel we have to anchor and revitalize at that corridor. It just, it has to happen. If it doesn't happen here, we got to look at other avenues.
And this week, we, past two weeks, we have demolished twenty-four, uh, demolitions that have gone on. Known, the Old Nona's Restaurant has come down. Uh, we're working on the payday loan across the street. And we are really.
Before it gets established.
We are, that is even before.
Down, it's worth more.
And, you know, I will tell you personally, as a resident of the West End, there has not been a lot that has been put in to the West End to help stabilize. Here we have the wonderful, very successful Justice Center and Workforce Development that has stabilized a corridor that had forty-five million dollars invested into that corridor. And now, we need to move forward on both ends of town, West End and East End. And I'd just like to remind you, we have closed TIFs.
And the other thing I will remind with this TIF, it will run parallel to the economic development strategy that we are working on as well. So you'll have that extra blanket of control to make sure it meets what we're looking to do five, ten, twenty years down the line. Um, so that will give us a better roadmap in, in what the purpose of anything is. But this one just happens to be running parallel to the development and the finalization of that economic development strategy, which most likely will identify this as a corridor of stabilization and redevelopment.
Alderman Steele, you had a comment?
No, you answer it.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay.
Well, I will just say that, yes, I agree as that area needs help. And if we don't pass the study tonight, then we need to do something. And maybe it's not TIF, but we have to do something. Driving here, that's how I drive down here, several times a week. It is blighted. I don't know if in the legal sense, but as I said in the committee, it's not indicative of the city that I think the way we want it to look.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. So we will now, Jenny?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will now move on. Okay. Let's now move to another motion from Administration. Oh, wait, I'm missing. Planning. What's on the next? Okay. Okay, got it.
Got it.
I was flip-flopping all over with my paperwork. Okay, Planning Commission, Alderman Dittelman.
Uh, we have two things tonight, uh, can we do them together?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. On behalf of, uh, the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion on eleven G, uh, G one, Sanctus Service Company Site Plan Approval for Proposed Vault Fuel Plant and Retail Gas Station Facility to be located at ten thirty-six South Greenmont Road within the C four commercial district. Thirteen dash zero one point zero dash three zero zero dash zero one zero, Ward six. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of seven to zero. The second one is eleven G two, the oblet subdivision. Preliminary slash final plat approval of the proposed oblet subdivision. The Planning Commission recommended the approval with a vote of seven to nothing.
Okay. Do we have a, a second to the motion?
Shaffer.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And a motion from Parks Board, Alderman Dittelman.
On behalf of the Park Board, I'd like to make a motion on eleven H one. Motion to waive the formal bidding procedure and utilize OmniA Cooperative Purchasing to purchase a twenty-eight foot hexagonal, all steel structure from Cunningham Recreational in the amount of forty-five thousand eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents as part of the Bellevue Park improvements, TIF and MEPRD funds.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Communications, Jenny.
I can read them together?
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve A, Belleville Barber Shop Chorus, June twenty twenty-three. Request from Belleville Barber Shop Chorus to s- display their annual show banner on North Illinois Street, June ninth, twenty twenty-three through June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Twelve B, Mepsi Pride Block Party, six seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Request from Mepsi to host Pride Block Party Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Six P M. to eleven P M. street closure request, North Church Street from East Main to Ollie Entrance in Yousa Patterborne Square. Ten A M. to eleven fifty-nine P M. additional city services, no parking, picnic tables, electric and trash toaters. Twelve C, Scott Air Force Base Military Reception, five nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Request from the City of Belleville to host Scott Air Force Base Military Reception Friday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Five thirty P M. to six thirty P M. City Hall atrium, additional services, tables, trash cans and alcohol to be reserved at reception. Twelve D, Bishop Jan- Jansen Center Dedication, six five, twenty twenty-three. Request from Diocese of Belleville to host the Bishop Jansen Center Dedication, Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three. One P M. to three P M. street closure request, half block in front of two twenty-four West Garfield between Cathedral Lane and South Third, ten A M. to five P M.
Okay. Motion?
Shaffer.
Any discussion?
Nope, I need a second.
Oh, we need a second. Ferguson. Thank you, Scott. Okay, discussion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening. Resolutions, I need a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty-four eighty-one, thirty-four eighty-two, and thirty-four eighty-three.
Steele.
Shaffer.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry, Jenny.
I can read them together?
Yes.
A fourteen A, Resolution thirty-four eighty-one. Resolution authorizing the redemption and payment of all the city's outstanding general obligation refunding bonds, Series twenty twelve, and certain other actions in connection therewith. Fourteen B, Resolution thirty-four eighty-two. A resolution amending the annual budget of the City of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, twenty twenty-three, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen C, Resolution thirty-four eighty-three. A resolution of support for submission of a Metro East Parks and Recreation District fiscal year twenty-three community planning grant program application.
Shaffer, so moved.
Steele, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Ostoff.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to be read by title only in ordinances ninety-one twenty-two, ninety-one fifty-one, ninety-one fifty-two, ninety-one fifty-three, ninety-one fifty-four, and ninety-one fifty-six. Are there any of these ordinances that you would like to have read aloud?
And fifty-five.
And fifty-five, sorry.
Whitaker, so moved.
Shaffer, second.
Okay. Jenny? Oh, I forgot to ask, all in favor? Any, all in favor of reading together? Opposed? Motion carries.
And you're good with them together, right? Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-one twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case zero two, January twenty-three. Lisa and Robert DeCerns. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-one fifty-one, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case thirteen, April twenty-three. William F. Ferricks. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-one fifty-two, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case fourteen, April twenty-three. Janice Pittman. Fifteen D, ordinance ninety-one fifty-three, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case fifteen, April twenty-three. Jody Ferguson. Fifteen E, ordinance ninety-one fifty-four, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case sixteen, April twenty-three. Jody Ferguson. Fifteen F, ordinance ninety-one fifty-five, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case seventeen, April twenty-three. Guy and Becky Van Nooty. Fifteen G, ordinance ninety-one fifty-six, twenty twenty-three, a zoning ordinance in regards to case eighteen, April twenty-three. Ashlyn Storage, Sunners East.
Shaffer, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Steele, second.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, any discussion on any of these? Any discussion? I do have a question on, uh, if, I believe we have a zoning case here in the ordinance that would be changing from residential to light district?
Is that the Ferricks one, the map amendment?
But yes, would you like to address that, please?
So, yes, you're correct. This is a map amendment that would rezone that property from A one to D one Light Industry. So it would become an industrial district.
Residential.
Right, they've already approved it, yeah.
They, they approved the advisory report, the K U from the Z B A that, um, basically recommended the map amendment for the rezoning to take place. So, it was presented to you, and this is the official ordinance to, to record.
Yeah. Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you very much. I had a question about that. Okay. We have no unfinished business?
I have a motion and a second.
Oh, motion and a second. We have to, roll call. No other discussion? Okay. Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Stay.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you. And we have no unfinished business. Under miscellaneous new business, I need a motion to appu- approve the motive fuel claims in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Elmore.
Duco.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Dittelman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, we have no executive session. And so, I need a motion to adjourn.
Shaffer, so moved.
Elmore.
Okay, any discussion?
Thanks for actually going fast on that one. Nobody else votes on anything else.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to thank the public for being here tonight. Thank you so much.